At this time, we will call the May 23, 2017 Alexandria County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. I will proceed with the invocation and then Commissioner Ryan Mayberry will do the pledge allegiance. So if you would please stand and we'll pray.
Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask your support and helping us to make wise decisions for the citizens of Alexandria County. We ask that you put a hedge around our emergency personnel, our police forces, Lord, and keep them safe. Lord, we thank you for this rain and the blessings it will bring in the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have our commissioners' reports, so encouraging commissioners to make any comments. I do have some comments about the budget work session, but I will hold those to the very end before we go into closed personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of things I attended last week. One was the air quality meeting at the COG on May the 16th, and some pretty good information from that. Air quality is good and they've actually relaxed emission inspections for like 21 counties in our area. There's also a monitor in Alexandria County that monitors the air quality, the ozone. In Alexandria County, we had a 65 reading and they say a 90 is something that's, you know, has to be above that before it's really looked at. So it sounds like with cars and everything else, things are getting cleaner. And also for Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba, there will be no emission inspections at all for those counties. The figures were kind of maybe to help us a little bit, but it was a savings to the vehicle owners of $3.4 million per year just by reducing that. So, you know, I just wanted to make that public too. Some good information for our area. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, at the monthly Veterans Commission meeting, we finalized plans for our Memorial Day service, which will be Sunday afternoon. It's going to be a very nice service and we certainly encourage everybody to come out. It's at the Courthouse lawn and we would love to see you there to honor those who have gave it all for us and our country. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, hearing no other reports, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A motion? Second? Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize, excuse me?
There was a resolution we were wanting to add to the agenda.
Okay, my apologies. There is one resolution that we'd like to add to the agenda, gentlemen? So let me find that. If that's not it.
It's not it.
No, sir. It's a resolution of support for adequate funding to meet mental health, intellectual and developmental disabilities and substance abuse disorder service for citizens of Alexandria County. So we will add that to the agenda. Will I motion that we add that?
I'll make a motion that we add the aforementioned resolution to tonight's agenda.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, moving along. At this time, I'd like to recognize David Eisenhower, our EDC Director, who wants to bring us up to speed on something we've referred to as Project Ice-T.
Project Ice-T, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It is my pleasure tonight to be able to stand before you and announce that Alexandria County will soon be home to a new industrial employer. Borealis Compounds Incorporated is finalizing the purchase of the 50,000 square foot shell building, the Alexander Railroad Shell Building, as you know, located in the Alexander Industrial Park. The company is a worldwide leader in the automotive industry and over the next few years, they will create at least 37 new jobs in Alexandria County, investing approximately $15 million in building and equipment in Alexandria County. And as you'll see before this evening is over, Borealis is a worldwide company. We are so privileged to have them in Alexandria County. They have a very strong business model, which we're very confident will result in a long-term presence in Alexandria County. It's a great company for Alexandria County, it's a great fit, and it's a great evening for Alexandria County. I'm blessed to be the person that gets to stand up here and make this initial announcement, but as we know, anytime that we get to this point in a project, that means that there's a large team of people that are part of it. This is not my accomplishment, this is the accomplishment of a team of people. And I want to take a minute to just point out some of the many partners that have participated in this project. Those include North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper, the North Carolina General Assembly, Appalachian Regional Commission, North Carolina Department of Commerce, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, North Carolina Department of Transportation, North Carolina Railroad Company, Alexander Railroad Company, Matthews Construction, North Carolina Community College System, Western Piedmont Council of Governments, Alexandria County Economic Development, and of course, without the support and encouragement of this Board of Commissioners, we wouldn't be here tonight. So Alexandria County Government is a great partner in this project as well. We are also fortunate that tonight, we have a few representatives with us who are with these agencies, and I did my best to assemble the team right behind me to make it easy for you to see some of these folks who are participating in this project. And if you don't mind, just wave when I call your name. They know some of you, but some of you are new faces. So we have with us Alexander Railroad President and General Manager Ben Zachary, Alexander Railroad Board Chairman, Mr. Jimmy Abernathy. We have Anna Lee Moore, who is Vice President, Economic Development, North Carolina Railroad Company. We have Brian Roberts with Matthews Construction. Where Brian? There's Brian. Garrett Wykoff, Senior Business Recruitment Manager, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. Mr. Bill Slagel, Regional Industry Manager, North Carolina Economic Development Partnership. And we have a couple of EDC Board members with us. Linda Graham is here. Hey Linda. And of course, Commissioner Mayberry and Rick French are on that EDC Board. We have a special guest with us tonight, North Carolina House Representative, Mr. Lee Zachary. Thank you. So Commissioners, this is part of the team that made this possible tonight, and I want to express my appreciation for them. First and foremost, though, we're here tonight to express our appreciation to Borealis Compounds. We have two of the leadership team with us here tonight. We are very pleased with the confidence that they've placed in us and I look forward, as I said, to this relationship that we're developing. We have with us tonight, Mr. Jacob Oliverias, who is Business Development Manager, North America Automotive. Jacob. And we have Mr. Ken Wykirk, who is President of Borealis. At this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Wykirk and he's going to present some additional information to you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear our presentation. I'd like to echo what Mr. Eisenhower said regarding the thanks that we should give to all those individuals that have helped us make this a very easy decision for Borealis. So thank you very much and thank you to the team. So tonight, we wanted to give an overview of the company that's going to be a member of your community in the very near future. So we wanted to talk about a bit of an introduction of Borealis. We also wanted to talk about some of the products that we offer and give you an idea of what offerings you should expect from the facility that's going to be built. We also talked about the actual building itself, what technology is going to go into there, and give you an idea of the next steps to this entire process. Anytime, of course, you have questions, feel free to let me know. So let's take a look at Borealis just at a glance. Borealis is a chemical company that produces polyolefins, base chemicals and fertilizers. We're going to be focusing mainly on the polyolefin area, so we'll talk about what that means, but essentially, it's plastics. So when you hear polyolefins, that means plastics. All the things that you use every day, polyethylene, polypropylene, okay? We are a, very much a strong European player, the second largest producer in Europe of polyolefins. We also have a joint venture called Beruge. Beruge has the largest contiguous polyolefin facility in the world, located in Ruwes, that's in United Arab Emirates. Our head office of Borealis is located in Vienna, Austria, and we operate globally. So we're a true global player, over 120 countries of operation, five continents. Borealis has 6,600 employees. If you also include Beruge, we have another 3,500 employees with that. And as you see with the distribution of employees globally, it is, as I said, very heavily Europe-weighted. We fall in the other section with USA, Brazil, South America with 500 employees. We very often like to start with our values because then our values drive really our decision processes. And this is not something that we just treat as a slide or a talking point, it is something we truly live. As you see, there's responsible, respect, exceed, and imbricity. Responsible, focusing heavily, of course, on the environment, the health of our employees and our community. Again, this is a key to the decision-making process. Respect, of course, this is the respect, of course, to our employees as well as the community, but when you look at a very diverse company such as Borealis, where it's a global player, we operate in many different regions, and it's actually crucial that you have a very high level of respect. The exceed, always looking to exceed, of course, our customer expectations, but all of our stakeholders' expectations, and we want to do it in a very flexible manner. And this is where the imbricity trademark comes in, where we look to do it very flexibly and look to seek very smart and simple goals and targets. Now built on these values, we have a very strong commitment in general to safety, but also sustainability. We recognize the need to have a focus on the sustainability, the cyclical economy, if you will, where we look not just at the initial products, but also how they could be offered in a fashion that is sustainable to the environment and the community. So as you see, a focus on health, personal safety, but also process and chemical safety. Borealis has recently acquired a company linked to recycling as an example, MTM Plastics in Europe, and we purchase this not only as a company, but also as a model on how we can be more sustainable, how we can look at recycling, and we look at the solutions we provide, how they could be offered in a sustainable fashion. And all of this is built on the umbrella of a high ethical standard. Again, ethics with our values coupled to make our decision processes. So as we said, there's three key areas that we focus with as a company. We have the polyolefins, base chemicals and fertilizers. We would like to talk about the polyolefin side, the plastic side, because that is what's going to be affecting this location. Again, the focus with this is creating innovative solutions, which provide lightweighting solutions, could assist with energy, various aspects that really assist the society. So when we dive into the polyolefins area, we see that automotive is one of the key areas. The other areas are associated with consumer products, which could be films and packaging, energy, which offers solutions with wire and cable, capacitor films, again, driving energy solutions in the region, as well as piping and fittings. So this could be gas, water, sewage treatment type opportunities. Again, automotive is what we're going to be introducing into this region. This is an extremely innovative area for Borealis. We're recognized as one of the leaders in the globe, so we have very strong presence in Asia, South America, and of course, Europe, where we're a leaning innovator. And again, the purpose of this investment is to offer a foothold, a stronghold in North America to grow similarly. So when we, when we talk about what we're going to do, we're going to be introducing a compounding facility, but I'm not sure if everyone understands what a compounding facility is. You can see from the pictures, that's an example of a compounding line. This is something that is a post-reactor process, so there's no reactor on their sites. It's a mixing process that uses resins that come in the form of box or rail, of course, and that's why we really favor the partnership that we're anticipating with Alexander Railroad. These are mixed in an advanced extruder system, and depending on what kind of additives you introduce, you get different types of performance in your finished goods and your final products. In this facility, we're also going to have advanced labs, which will be testing and qualifying the material, and then we're going to send this material out in a packaged fashion, either in boxes or in rail. You can get an understanding of the various components that you should expect when you're producing for automotive. There's about 135 pounds of material and plastic inside vehicles in general. And again, the goal is to substitute metal, make it lightweight, look for alternates of rubber. And again, this is leaning towards the sustainability of the environment, let's say. It gives opportunities to lightweight the vehicle, fuel consumption goes down, cost to produce, the vehicle goes down. But as you look at the vehicle that's shown in front of you, you see front end, front grille, bumper, fender, various components are made and it will be made in this facility. There's actual photos showing some examples here, the pedal housing, the fender, the dashboard, the front grille, for example. Again, supplying OEMs or manufacturers, let's say, in North America, such as GM, Ford, but also we have European OEMs such as BMW, VW, as well as Volvo. So we have some examples here. So what I'm going to show you is the finished good, okay? So this is a pillar. This is in the rear of the vehicle. You can see with the, how the seat belt would be pulled down, okay? So this would be an example, but again, we have everything from the dashboards and this is something that's, can fit on a plane essentially. But also, we want to show you some of the products that are going to come out of this new facility. So what comes out of the facility is in pellet form, and then this goes to a manufacturer, which is called a tier, and they injection mold these various parts. Okay, so I'll show you these and you can pass them around. So what is it, what is the plan for the coming year? What we see is construction beginning at the end of 2017, and we plan on continuing through 2018. There will be rail installed, as you see the photo of the shell building on the left side of the facility. And after that, most of the activity is going to occur inside the building. So this could be the office construction, as we said, there's going to be an advanced laboratory installed. We will have a lot of process equipment. There will be structures inside the facility, some silos on the exterior, and there's going to be the support equipment. This could be transfer systems, mixing systems, et cetera. And of course, what's very important to all of us is the hiring of personnel. That's of course, one of the reasons why we selected this region with the support that we've seen from the community. We very much appreciate that, as well as the educational services that are nearby. We see a minimum of 37 permanent positions. These are very nice positions, if you look from a career perspective. We have maintenance mechanics, electricians, production operators, engineers. We'll have lab technicians, as well as fork truck operators. So I'll open it up to the board with, for any questions.
Gentlemen?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate you guys coming into our county and it's, I think, a great thing for Alexandria County and with what's going on here and with the car industry. I'm pretty familiar with the car industry and those things, so it's going to keep moving forward for a lightweight, and y'all are right in the center of it, and I'm glad you're here in Alexandria County, and we appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, being on the EDC Board, it's been, it's been a real pleasure to watch the building come from a concept from Mr. Zachary and the rest of the railroad personnel, and watch that go from a concept to a building, and now we've got an actual employer moving in. So we appreciate you guys being here, and I think you'll find that the community is very welcoming. We've got a great community college educational facility here. Linda Graham is going to be leaving us, but she's done a great job of getting this up and running, and we appreciate you guys. If there's anything we can do to help you, just let us know.
Very much appreciate it.
And I'll echo those thoughts and certainly hope the transition is smooth, and if you do run any issues, just reach out to us and we'll certainly try to make sure that the path is paved for you.
We very much appreciate your support.
I do have just a couple of questions. So 37 permanent full-time positions, how many do you anticipate will be hired locally and how many do you anticipate will be brought in from other locations? Because of course, you're going to have to have personnel to get the place up and running.
Right, and that's something that we're exploring, but the majority by far, I would say 30 or above, that's what I anticipate. So we're going to try to, we're going to try to have as many local personnel as possible and only bring in where we might have an expertise gap, but again, this is a very technical type of an application.
Right.
But yeah, the majority, of course, we want to have with the local community. We want to tie to the, we're hoping to have careers with this. We're not hoping to have a, an annual or a two-year type of a role. We want people here for 15 or 20 years.
It's, you know, this area's been traditionally furniture, a lot of agriculture still here, but it's, you know, it's going to be a great thing for us to have a new type of manufacturing here, so we look forward to it.
Absolutely.
I also want to point out, I think the vision that Alexander Railroad had to build a spec building, because it's not easy to build something, you don't have a tenant to either purchase or lease it to. You're taking that risk, and it was a joint venture with some assistance, you know, we were involved in, but you know, all the heavy lifting was done by Alexander Railroad and as far as the capital injection into that building, you know, appreciate that vision, appreciate you taking that chance because it makes this happen. And again, thank you very much.
Yeah, I truly appreciate that also, and really, I appreciate the foresight in Alexander Railroad and Mr. Zachary, and I appreciate the support they've also given us during this process. I can say that we've evaluated about 40 different locations, multiple states, and the facility that was built, the shell building, really made a tangible vision for us, and we saw that based on that, without having a tenant, you had a clear commitment to having some industry in this area. And it was very clear to us, and it really helped us make the decision. So thank you.
Sir, we're thrilled that you're here. I think you'll find that this is a great place to live and grow and do business. We have an outstanding school system and wonderful cordial people all throughout the county, and we certainly hope that you get nothing but a great big welcome. We're excited to have a cutting-edge company such as Borealis to be here. The whole aspect is just, you know, it's, like Ryan said, you know, we've been basically a furniture company or furniture area over the years, and it's thrilling to see new things. That expands our horizons, expands the horizons of our children, shows that there is, you know, there's different things and lots of wonderful opportunities, and the fact that you guys are embedded in core values, strong mission, you know, that's just great people that we're excited to have with us. So welcome, and anything that we can do, we would be more than happy to assist in any way we can.
Thank you.
I'll say too, it's amazing that with all these people involved, we were able to keep it quiet, so.
Yeah.
You're no longer Ice-T.
It's, I apologize for the name too.
One, one other question. What, you said you looked at 40 sites, multiple states. Obviously, I think the shell building was the first building to be certified, was it work-ready? Or, but anyway, you know, obviously, it was a first-class facility, but, so we, you know, so we can learn, what brought you to, I mean, what made the decision to come to, or what made you make the decision to end up here?
It's a good question. There was, of course, a very strict criteria that we established. We looked at proximity to the customer, for example. We looked at infrastructure, so road systems, rail. We looked at the type of the building, of course, and that's, the type of the building was, it met the requirements from height, from say, age, okay? In some cases, we saw some structures that were quite old. But from a people standpoint, of course, we want to work with a community that clearly wants to work with us. And of course, when you go to other facilities, there's very few that say they don't want to, but there's the subliminal indications such as, I said, with the commitment by having the brand-new facility sitting there, ready for construction, the discussions we had regarding the grant process, the discussions and professional packages that we had associated with the education with the community colleges, as you had mentioned, Mr. Mayberry. All of these really weighed in and made a very clear decision, let's say.
Well, we're glad, I mean, we're very glad that you did. I remember early on in our discussions, you know, we were talking about, you know, it has to have 20, is it 26-foot ceilings? Is that correct?
24.
24-foot ceilings, you know, we're sitting there going, it's got to have, you know, and I don't remember who's saying it because it wasn't me, but you know, needs 24-foot ceilings. And very few manufacturing facilities around have 24-foot ceilings. And then we hear you, that you guys are potentially having to have equipment shrunk, or you know, you're having to make sure your equipment will fit and things, and we're going, holy cow. I'm glad we, you know, glad that the Railroad and Economic Development Corporation had the foresight to look at what we need, you know, what you need. And like I say, we're thrilled to have you and wish you all the success in the world and hopefully, you know, good business and growth and.
Thank you.
I've actually been to the building and actually, David Eisenhower and myself went out there a couple of weeks ago, and I would hope that we would be able to come when you guys get ready to move in. I'd love to take a tour after you get the equipment in and love to see what it looks like.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I just have one question. I know, like other guys, I already stated, glad y'all are here. I know it's kind of early in the thing, but when you go somewhere, do you typically just look to stay at the same size, or are you possibly looking at, there could be expansion if it calls for it, to decide?
Success always brings the question of expansion, so we hope to be very successful.
So you're open, open to expansion?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And again, when we talk forethought, we look at the grading of the property for expansion. Again, that was part of the package that we have the opportunity to expand, and that's something that was also very attractive to Borealis.
I think what you mentioned about the ceiling heights, the challenge in repurposing older buildings, they just don't work. That's the sad thing.
That was a challenge we found.
We hear it a lot, you know, why can't we use these old buildings and they just don't meet today's manufacturing needs? And I have to say, I'm a home builder, I own a home building company, nothing like what you guys do. So I had to go online and look up and kind of learn a little bit about this, and Mr. Eisenhower was trying to explain to me about the little pellets, the plastic pellets, and I just, you know, what, what is he talking about? Plastic pellets used in automotive, so it's very interesting and, you know, it's something that we've never seen around here, so looking forward to you guys being, becoming established and growing here, and like I said, you, this is a great place to be and. and growing here and like I said, you, this is a great place to be and your employees will do good for you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Sir, if you may, one other question. Take the pellets and then they go to another facility and you make the products. Are those other facilities in the United States or are they in?
Yes. So, as of now, it's basically North America and mainly U.S.
Outstanding, so that's exciting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the time and the support. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
At this time, I think we'd like to recognize Mr. Abernathy and Mr. Zachary from Alexander, or, excuse me, am I getting this out of order? Mr. Borealis?
That's great.
Gentlemen, would y'all like to say anything?
I'd like to thank Alexander County for what they've done and other commissioners and y'all have been great to work with and we look forward to the new company also being here. Thank y'all.
Okay, David?
Mr. Zachary, I think, wants to say if you wish, come on up to the podium, Ben.
You don't get to sit, you have to stand.
I'll be short. I was just going to say, it's a saying around railroads that it never rains on railroads, but what a bright sunny day it's been today for North Carolina, Alexander County and Alexander Railroad. This doesn't happen very often and it only happens when everyone pulls together and that's been evidence here that the team here is not worried about who gets credit for what and the proof is that Borealis is here, they want to be here and we want them here, we want them to be successful. David has already thanked all the partners that work so well together, but I want to thank David personally, what a leader he's been to orchestrate this recruitment. Really appreciate the professionalism and the enthusiasm, just couldn't have had a better leader for this. But, the railroad being the developer and the service provider for the building allowed us to set the bar high when it came to recruiting. We wanted a clean manufacturer, we wanted a good corporate citizen, we wanted a significant bump in the tax base for an industry, we wanted well-paying jobs and we wanted a rail user. I'm proud to say that Borealis cleared that bar. To Ken and Jacob and everyone at Borealis, I want to thank you for the confidence you placed in us and now it's up to us to prove that you made a great decision and we'll do everything at the railroad we can and I'll speak for the other partners to make sure you're successful here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary. And Ben also just completed the Boston Marathon, if you didn't see that in the news.
He did. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Zachary. Continuing on the railroad theme, I also wanted to give an opportunity for Anna Lee Moore with the North Carolina Railroad to address and say a couple of comments, they're very instrumental in this project as well.
So, on behalf of the North Carolina Railroad Company, I just wanted to let you all and you all know what a privilege it is to be a part of the team welcoming Borealis Compounds to Alexander County, the Alexander Railroad and the state of North Carolina tonight. The North Carolina Railroad Company last year launched an initiative called NCR Invest where we are partnering with railroads and communities across the state to recruit economic development projects and what we did was we set up an initiative where we are partnering to help pay for the rail infrastructure of job-creating projects and so we're excited to be a part of this and at the risk of sounding cheesy, you guys are to be commended and I hope you raise a glass, cheers to you for going out on a limb and creating an innovative partnership with the Alexander Railroad. I talked to site-location consultants all over the country, there is a shortage of development-ready rail sites and even more so, there's a shortage of rail-served buildings that manufacturers can actually use today. You clearly understand that and you are to be commended for your efforts, so cheers to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And I think we have comments from Mr. Lee Zachary, our House Representative. Thank you.
I'm going to get around here to the side and look at everybody. First, I'd like to congratulate y'all. Y'all have done a wonderful job and I think, you know, like everyone said, there's a lot of teamwork that's gone into this and David, I think you and Gary, for all that y'all have done to get this underway. And then from the legislative standpoint, we spent a lot of time talking about what we could do to attract the industry, to get good industry in here and it kind of warms my heart to see that maybe some of what we've done in Raleigh has paid off and I hope it's, will continue to pay off here. And then the second thing is, you know, I go a lot of places and usually, if you're going to get two Zacharys together, it's me and my wife. So, anyway, I'm glad to finally meet the Ben Zachary over here, so, anyway. And then, on behalf of the North Carolina General Assembly, I'd like to welcome y'all to North Carolina, so I'm glad to have you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for being here, Representative Zachary. I knew it was, you know, hard to schedule in, so we appreciate it.
So, I think that concludes our presentation of our new industry tonight, commissioners. Again, I just, I can't say, you know, thank you enough to all these people and this is by far the best part of my job when I get to participate in something that I can actually say I think means something to people by bringing them new opportunities and while we greatly appreciate our legacy employers here in Alexander County, we've talked for years and years about the need to diversify our economy and this is another step in that direction and, again, I just, I look forward to a long prosperous partnership with this company and look for great things to come. I know that you have budget discussions on your agenda and all these people really want to stay and help you, but.
They're already helping.
However.
They're part of the solution.
Due to other time constraints, we are going to politely exit and thank you again for your time and this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Look forward to having you guys here.
Look forward to seeing you again. Thanks a lot.
Good luck.
Appreciate you. It's been an experience. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. And David, you did a. David, you did a good job. I know it was a lot to mediate between all these different groups, so thank you.
All right, after that, good news is going to be hard to follow, but next on the agenda, I'll recognize Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you have a resolution of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners supporting federal community and economic development programs. This resolution is to support our Western Piedmont Council of Government as they try to push forward and apply for, have different grant programs, the A R C grants, Economic Development Administration Home Investment Partnerships Program, Community Development Block Grants and so on. In your package, the resolution deals with the numbers and all the investment that's made in our region and if there's not any questions, I would recommend that we move forward with supporting this resolution that helps support our region through the Western Piedmont Council of Governments.
You've heard the recommendation from County Manager French?
Make a motion to accept the resolution as stated.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Second?
Second. Okay, double seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. French?
Our next item is the Alexander County Events Update and I'd like to call on Gary Herman.
So, you've got one more fun thing before you get to budget. Okay. All right. So, Mr. French asked me to give an events update, so we're going to talk about a couple of ribbon cuttings that we were fortunate to be able to attend in downtown area and then we'll get into some fun things that are going on around the county that will hopefully attract some visitors and get our residents out and about. Start off with the ribbon cutting at Pleasant Trees. It's located at eighty East Main Avenue. The owners are Jennifer Martin and Russ Harrow. I believe most of you know both of those. They offer a wide variety of women's clothing, accessories, jewelry and bedding products. And according to Jennifer Martin, the store has had a steady flow of customers since they opened, so she's very pleased with the success thus far and excited to be a star of downtown revitalization. Their hours do vary somewhat, but most days they are open eleven to six, so that is in the location next to Andrew Binfield Insurance, if that helps you, okay? And Commissioner Reese, he was at the ribbon cutting for sixteen ninety T-Ville scoops. That was this past Sunday at one o'clock. Thank you for coming out. He spoke a few words and welcomed the new owners, Barry and Lisa McDonald, and they are just being, they feel very blessed by the community and the response has been overwhelming to say the least. They're up to twenty-five-plus flavors of ice cream and that day of the ribbon cutting, it was, you know, standing room only. The whole interior of the shop was lined, people waiting in line with big smiles on their face, so we're excited to have them in downtown. They originally started at three days a week. Now she has resigned from her full-time job and now this is her full-time job, so they're open Tuesday through Saturday from ten to ten and on Sundays from one to ten, so we have some nightlife opportunities here in Alexander County. Go eat some ice cream.
Gary, if I could make one comment?
Sure.
I had some folks, being in the real estate business, that moved here from another area and ran into them and they said something about, two nights before, they had decided they'd take their kids and go get ice cream and they had driven to Taylorsville and they said, there's nowhere to get ice cream. And, you know, we've got Hayward Bowman's out on Church Road, which.
Hardly open.
Now, yeah, now that Mr. Bowman's, you know, gone, that's a little questionable, but we haven't had anywhere in Alexander County to get ice cream.
I remember the igloo, you know, back when I was a kid.
Well, and I mean, and I remember as a kid, just in Bethlehem, there was Circus Hall Cream and Frosty King.
Oh, yeah.
But, in the last, in recent history, there's been nowhere to get ice cream.
There's twenty-five flavors. I've tried three, can't wait to try the rest of them. And with, you know, you've got Yocal there, the star of the choral musical that works behind the, they're so friendly and the kids are just, it's a great place.
Yeah, I think she has about eight to ten part-time high school students and they're all, you know, super outgoing and friendly, but professional at the same time, so all positive comments on this new ice cream shop. And if people are saying, you know, where is this? If you're an old-timer here, it's the former Carolina Tire Building, most recently Gunbunker. But, she also has plans to expand into the double-A gunsmithing part and have Wi-Fi access and couches, chairs and all kinds of coffee and stuff, so it's exciting news.
It's a good thing, warm in the wintertime.
Yeah.
My family, at least, will keep it busy if no one else does. They've tried about all those ice cream flavors and.
Oh, he's already tried all twenty-five.
Grandpa's got a blog.
Grandpa doesn't have to keep as much in the freezer now, so they can come to town and get it.
That's right.
If you get a banana split, you can do three at one time, that's what I did.
Hey, the banana splits, it's almost seven dollars, I think, but it's a two-pound banana split.
It's that big.
There was one guy, and when I was taking some photos at the ribbon cutting, she said, no, do you want the small banana split or the large? And he said, oh, I'll go for the large and she said, are you sure? So, anyway, it was a fun day. Mickey Mouse and Minnie Mouse were there and Mayor Holloman and Ronnie and myself, so we had a good day. But, anyway, success story there. Our latest business spotlight, this makes number fifty-three for us at the EDC. We've done fifty-three videos. This is for Little Stitches Embroidery. Many of you know Tracy Kerrigan Fox. She has years of experience in embroidery, monogramming, screen printing, so she decided to quit working out of her home and open her own shop and now she's got kind of a co-op type deal in this location at six fifty-eight East Main Avenue. She's got about fifteen vendors in there, so there's something for everything, for everyone there. And if you watched the video, I put my money where my mouth was, she said, we even have gift certificates and it was my wife's birthday, the day of the event, or the day of the video. I said, okay, I'm on video here, I'm going to buy a gift certificate and Chad filmed it and so it happened, so I supported a local business that day. But, she does have a lot of stuff, you need to check it out. She's a really, really great person, too. And all of our videos, you can watch on our BioLocal Alexander Facebook page. We also post them on the EDC website and on the county's YouTube channel. Okay, we're going to move over to the events portion of this presentation. The Band of Oz, of course, that's a big-name beach band, started back in the sixties. If you like beach music, you need to go to this, it's going to be a really good show and part of the proceeds goes to local food pantries, so it's helping some local charities. The event is May twenty-sixth at six thirty P.M. at Brushy Mountain Golf Club and weather pending, it's going to be an outdoors event, so it's going to be a good day out at McClendon's Restaurant and Brushy Mountain Golf Club. And I did want to mention, you know, keeping up with tourism and events, McClendon's and Brushy Mountain, they offer live music every Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, so if you like live music, you need to go out there and check them out. And this Thursday, actually, the Brushy Mountain Old-Time Jam, that's where you bring your own instrument and you play old-time music and if you can't play, like myself, you just go listen. It's a fun time. So, again, Band of Oz, Friday, May twenty-sixth, that's this Friday. All right. Sandbar Marina and Grill Spring Social. Who knows where the Sandbar Marina and Grill is? That's the Rinkdam Marina. That's, this is the new name. They're currently renovating it, as you can tell from the photograph, they've got the patio area, the concrete poured and they're tearing out the insides of the building and they're going to renovate that, but on Memorial Day weekend, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of May, from eight to eight, they're going to have live music and they're going to be selling fuel and they're going to have a food truck there and all kinds of things. So, they're inviting everybody to come by and check out the plans for the new facility and they're going to have it open and running for the summer boat season, so. And this was purchased by John Hobson out of Winston-Salem, so we appreciate his investment in our community. On Saturday, June third, the Carrying Hearts Night Run for Life, five K. Of course, that's the Carrying Hearts Pregnancy Center. This is their annual fundraiser. Activities begin at five o'clock, live music and family fun. The One Mile Stroller Stroll Fun Trot begins at eight and the five K begins at nine. Registration's twenty-five dollars for the five K or twenty dollars for the fun run. ACHS Cougar Club Golf Tournament, that's Saturday, June tenth, at Brushy Mountain Golf Club. This raises money for all athletics at the high school. Lunch is included at twelve o'clock and shotgun start at one o'clock. And also wanted to remind you that the high school is also offering softball, soccer, football, baseball, basketball and cheerleading camps this summer, as they always do, for elementary and middle school students. So, Cougar Club Golf Tournament is June tenth at Brushy Mountain. Sign up today. CBCC Alexander Furniture Academy, we're proud of that and the success they're having there, but they are having a furniture sale Monday through Thursday, June twelfth through the fifteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Sofas are three hundred, love seats two hundred and chairs one fifty. Now, if you're a CBCC alum, alumni or a student, faculty, staff, you get a twenty-five percent discount. So Cougar Club Golf Tournament is June 10th at Brushy Mountain. Sign up today. CBCC Alexander Furniture Academy, we're proud of that and the success they're having there. But they are having a furniture sale Monday through Thursday, June 12th through the 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Sofas are 300, love seats 200, and chairs 150. Now, if you're a CBCC alum, alumni, or a student, faculty, staff, you get a 25% discount. So that includes a lot of people in the community. And also wanted to tell you that the Furniture Academy is hosting its second Furniture Industry Job Fair and Open House. That's coming up on Wednesday, May 31st at 6:00.
I had to say something about that furniture.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to do a little commercial here. I actually bought one of the chairs. And I sit in that every day. It is well-built. It's a great chair. And if you're looking for some very sturdy furniture, they've got some great stuff.
Oh, yeah. You know, the students make it, but it goes through a rigorous inspection process, so it's a good opportunity to get some good furniture. Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. If you love to run, the Vertical Mile Challenge III is Saturday, June 17th. I've done about two laps in a row and about fell over. This is eight laps. So you've got to do eight laps within eight hours, I believe. So as of today, we were up to about 31 people who have come from across the state to do this event, or who have registered online to do it. So this, it just continues to take off and to become a more popular event. This is the third annual event. It's approximately 16, 17 miles, and it's tough. It's a, it's an ultra-event. Online registration is available through June 15th, or you can register the morning of the event. Again, that's Vertical Mile Challenge III, Saturday, June 17th, at Rocky Face Park. On Sunday, July 2nd, free concert of the 440th North Carolina Army National Guard Band. That is at the Alexander Central Auditorium. Like I said, it is a free concert. It's supposed to be about an hour and 15 minutes long. You don't need a ticket. Just show up and enjoy some patriotic music. And that's again, a Saturday, July 2nd auditorium. Independence Celebration then follows the next weekend, July 8th. It's at the high school, sponsored by Alexander County Habitat for Humanity. Events get underway at 6:00. And live music featuring Rocky Lynn. We'll have food and other vendors. And of course, everybody wants to know when are the fireworks going to go off? Well, when it's good and dark. And that's probably about 10:00. So parking will be at a minimum, even with the high school parking lot. So we pull people from all over the place with this event. But we did want to thank Alexander County Habitat for Humanity for sponsoring and organizing the event and all the volunteers who've helped. And if a business out there would like to help sponsor the event, you can contact Alexander County Habitat. And all of these events and more are on our tourism website. Let's visit alexandernc.com. And you can even post your own event. If you have a big event coming up that you think is going to attract a good number of residents or visitors to our county, you can click on that green button right there, post your event, and it goes through an approval process. If it meets our criteria and our guidelines, we'll add it to the calendar. We're getting thousands of hits a month. And it's not, Taylorsville's probably five, six, seven on down the list. It's other, other cities and counties that people are looking at us from. So we're excited about that. And that's the end of my update.
Questions, gentlemen?
I guess you could do the Vertical Mile Challenge and then go get the Jumbo Banana Split.
Well, I couldn't, but one could. No questions. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good job, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. The place where there says nothing's going on, that seems to be quite a lengthy roster.
Pretty, pretty wide open.
This time, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French, 2017-18 Proposed Budget Message.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as of, before I begin, we will email copies out and make sure all the different agencies, county departments, schools, news media, everyone that is, will need a copy will get one, if not today, first thing in the morning. So the 2017-2018 budget message, the proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year 2017-2018 totals $38,900,000. There is no proposed tax increase and no change in fees. The original 2016-2017 budget totaled $38,284,170. The revised 2016-2017 budget, that's after budget amendments as, as it stands right now, totals $39,522,836. And the 2015-2016 budget for the general fund totaled $38,867,686. Last year, we talked about the new sales tax, and the General Assembly had approved additional sales taxes as part of the sales tax expansion. New sales tax are part of the, were part of the 2016-2017 budget. Alexander County will receive $1.3 million in the current fiscal year. This sales, sales tax can only be expended in three areas, including education, community college, and economic development. The Alexander County Board of Commissioners approved $400,000 of the new sales tax for Alexander County Schools last year in 16, in the 16-17 fiscal year, the year we're in now. In fact, since 2013-2014 budget year, the Alexander County Commissioners have increased funding to the Alexander County Schools by $1,31,900. And just to put the years on those increases, 2013 and 2014, the budget for the schools was increased $250,000. In 2015-2016, the budget for the schools were, was increased 800, I'm sorry, $381,900. And in 2016-2017, the budget we're in now, it has increased $400,000. In conjunction with these funds, Alexander County borrowed $6,256,000 on June of 2004 to finance three projects. One of these projects was building an auditorium at, at Alexander Central High School. A total of $4 million of the, a total of $4 million of the June 30, 2004 loan was the auditorium construction. For many years, Alexander County has paid debt service on school capital projects from Article 40 and Article 42 sales tax. That is a set aside for school capital. When the auditorium project came along, the Board of Education did not want the full amount of the debt service to be paid from sales tax set-aside money. The Board of Education wanted the county to pay $2 million, half the principal amount of the auditorium debt out of the county general fund money. That way, there'd be more flexibility. The county agreed to 12-year schedule to make annual payments to the Board of Education as follows. In 2006, $125,000, $200,000 in 2007, $325,000 in 2008, and then $150,000 per year for fiscal years 2009 through 2017. These payments are referred to as auditorium reimbursement payments, and will be paid in full by June 30th of this year, this fiscal year, June 30, 2017. As presented at our, as at our May 15th budget work session, sales tax plays a major role in revenue for the general fund budget, while about 18% of general fund revenues are from sales taxes. We have a brief review, and we had talked about those, the sales taxes over the last several years. There's three pages at the back of the report, which the commissioners have, and again, we'll send that same information to everyone. And the main thing there, I wanted to point out, and we've talked about it before, is in addition to the sales tax, the county had to, had to pay in addition to the school sales tax hold, what we call school sales tax hold harmless. In fiscal year 2014-2015, Alexander County was required to pay $181,708 to Alexander County Schools. And in 2015-2016 fiscal year, the county was required to pay the school hold harmless $199,148 for that fiscal year. And for the current fiscal year, we have paid $168,438 that was required from the county general fund for the school hold harmless. And that's through April of this year. And we didn't talk about that last, at the work session that we had. Just want to point that out. Growing our county tax base continues to be our number-one challenge in Alexander County. County sales taxes are improving slowly. New business and industry is also improving. This is an incremental process. And so the recommendation is that there is no recommended funding increase in the budget for Alexander County Schools. Funding is recommended at $6,31,900, which is the same as last year without the auditorium reimbursement. One funded expense not mentioned in the work session is the school nurse funding initiative grant funds. The Alexander County Health Department has managed these funds from the state for the last six years. That's fiscal year 2012 to 2017. The Health Department has given $898,391 to the school system during this time, which equates to about $150,000 per year for school nurses. A joint meeting between the Alexander County Commissioners, the Alexander County School Board, and CBCC is being planned to discuss the plan for early college. No county funds are budgeted for early college. A total of $47,771 was paid for early college with the ARC Equipment Grant Funds, and that's 50% grant plus local match in dollars. It was 100%, $100,000 in grant funds matched with $100,000 of county local match. And that's while it's in the first year. Last month, Commissioners, County Commissioners applied for two state low-interest loans and grants. Alexander County applied for nearly $5 million in low-interest water loans and $5 million in sewer infrastructure for the Bethlehem community. A $1 million sewer project will extend pressure sewer into Stony Point at Sure Tape Industries. A second sewer grant will be applied for this summer for Stony Point. Despite these efforts, the county tax base grows slowly at less than 1% in new growth in property tax revenue. And then talking about the expenses of the almost $41 million in budgetary requests received, capital items in the 2017-2018 budget are as follows. $235,000 capital outlay for four vehicles for the Sheriff's Department with camera systems, emergency lights, sirens, radios, rifle, shotgun, AED, and other emergency equipment. $170,000 capital outlay for two, for a new ambulance to replace 2009 ambulance with over 225,000 miles. $225,900 for new technology requests, IT-type requests, replacing computers, network switches, firewalls, cameras at courthouse, and some phone replacement. That is in the budget, and that is detailed in your request notebooks. There's $115,000 to purchase property, which is currently being leased for evidence storage for the Sheriff's Department. There's $101,000 to replace an existing county mobile air van. $41,777 to purchase 33 handheld radios in detention. $46,000 to replace two county DSS vehicles, and the estimated county, county funding on those vehicles is $30,814. There's also replacement of a projector and screen at $12,000 in the training room of the Sheriff's Department. Funds are also set aside to repave the Bethlehem library parking lot, the parking lot with the Health Department and County Administration. 23 employees were requested and discussed during the work session on May 15th. Most of the employees are not funded, including a full-time employee at the North Carolina, North Carolina License Plate Agency and Rocky Face Park. Funded employees include a full-time county attorney, a DSS income maintenance supervisor, a public information director, a health promotion planner, which is an employee that would work between the Health Department and Emergency Services, a purchasing employee, moving a part-time employee at the senior center to full-time and not replacing the part-time employee, a human resource employee, two 911 communicators, telecommunicators, started in October of 2017, and four EMS employees that would go from a 12-hour truck to a 24-hour truck, which will decrease the majority of our overtime that we have in budget. These employees would start October 2017. A 2.5% COLA is proposed, effective October 2017. This will cost the county $253,304. We previously discussed a COLA effective in September of 2017. The last COLA for Alexander County employees was approved in December 2010. A number of Alexander County products or projects are in process. The major ones are as follows. Completion of the Alexander CBCC Applied Technology Center, the Sure Tape Sewer Project, which will extend sewer, pressure sewer into Stony Point. The Community One Bank Project, which is a relocation of many county departments into the Community One Bank in downtown. The Rocky Face Park, Project Phase Two, which will be completed by September 2017, and the industrial sewer pump station. A number of projects are also in the planning stages. The Bethlehem Sewer Project, we were, we have applied for a state low-interest loan, and it's been submitted for $5 million. There's, we've also applied for a state low-interest loan for water for, for $5 million. And that's to complete the water projects at the list that we started back in 2000, 2007, 2008 fiscal year. Broadband project, the County Commissioners have formed a broadband committee, and they've met and established a internet survey assessment, and that is currently underway and will conclude soon. We were almost at 2,000 surveys received. We're also working on a RFQ for engineering, is being developed for state grants, and funds are out there and available, so that's moving along. The Stony Point Sewer Project, there is a CDBG fund application that's due in the summer of this year, 2017, to extend sewer in Stony Point. We'll make that application. There are also two Alexander County Duke Energy Recreation Projects in the early stages. Wittenberg Access Property is being looked at to be developed as a recreational area with part-of-funds, and that's Parking Recreation Trust Funds, and with a long-term lease to Alexander County, which is, would be 40 years. And also Duke Energy and Alexander County are looking at, looking at Dusty Ridge, which is to further develop with more recreational areas, and also with more part-of-funds with a new lease, a new 40-year lease with, with Duke Energy. One additional project, project, which is under discussion, is the development of the smaller Taylor Togs building located adjacent to CBCC. This facility could be used for CBCC classrooms, but is in the early stages. City of Hickory is proposing a 1.7% increase in water rates for 2017-2018. Water taps will continue at the inside rate for the upcoming budget year. The public hearing for the 2017-2018 proposed budget is scheduled for June 5th, 2017 County Commissioner Meeting, which will begin at 6:00 PM here at CBCC in this room. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for the budget message.
Gentlemen, that is a lot to digest. Comments?
I'll just mention, just for people listening and watching, that the part-of-funds, that's the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, is something that we use to do the projects out at Rocky Face, and that's not a county fund. One other comment I'll make, the, Mr. French was speaking about the hold harmless money. What, what that is, is the General Assembly changed how sales tax was distributed to counties, schools, and towns. And they took a lot of that money and filled in the state budget and told the counties that any towns and any school systems that are inside of your counties, you have to now pay them out of your funds so that they will not see a decrease in the money that comes to them from that sales tax change. So that's, the counties had to fill in that money, county taxpayers.
Mr. French, I had a question. Several people asked me about attorney, and, you know, that there's a backside of that, too, that's not evident, the fact that we will not be, you know, we're already billed attorney fees and services now. So, I mean, that's, that's a cost that we will not incur anymore either in the future. So just wanted to make sure that that was, people were aware of that.
And we're vetting the cost-benefit of a full-time attorney versus outsourcing, even though I'm sure in some situations, due to complexity, if you have a general attorney, you're not going, you're still going to have to outsource at some point. you're not going, you're still going to have to outsource at some point in time.
Certainly will, yes.
Couple on here, and we'll talk, I, you know, I, I've got some feelings about the Public Information Director and purchasing employee, just personally, I, you know, I don't know that I'm getting there on that, but I'm just making that comment. We still have time to vet that out, but I will state that at this point in time.
If, if there are concerns, we need to either schedule another work session or talk about it at some point. I know there will be questions about some of the items, since we haven't talked about everything fully when we had our first work session.
This is a good, I mean, from where we started, this is, we've made good progress, but there's still some.
I believe, and especially for those two positions, and, and the county attorney as well, there needs to be a, you know, a list developed, these are the pros, these are the cons, this is what that position's going to be doing, this is the, you know, Public Information Officer. That's going to be taking a lot of, how do I say that? There's a lot of different people involved in that right now, and you're going to take all that and move it into one position. I think that needs to be addressed, how that's going to work. I think the county attorney, we're already paying a lot of legal fees, and we have so many different projects, different grants, different app, you know, things that we're involved in all the time. Speed is, you know, a big part of why we need a full-time attorney. And, of course, you're right, there are some issues that are very complex that you always have to hire outside help. Purchasing agent, I think that needs to be, you know, we need to know, how's that person going to save money? How's that person going to make the different departments run more efficiently?
How are they going to pay for themselves?
How are they going to pay for themselves?
Basically, and add additional.
And that's actually a program that we had before, but got away from, and we do some of that with a employee does some of the office and office supplies and different things. But we do a lot of things by, I'll say, by committee, and it doesn't get, it's not handled as it could be. In, in purchasing, you deal with contracts, and there's a lot of information that could be located in one place, working with the county attorney, and we could do a better job, and I think get better deals on things. I think we miss out, but I think, again, we need to talk, those things we need to talk about.
We have a formalized vendor management program for the various vendors.
We do, but there's a lot more we could do if we had a purchasing person. We do an awfully, if you look at other counties our size, if you look at the number of employees and positions, we, we are far behind, but I know that's not what you want to hear tonight, but we can talk about it at some point in time. I wish you'd ask questions, we could talk about it then.
I, I, one question I have, I'm not going to wait, so, if, if it was a, if, if we had a private business that had the number, same number of employees that we had, would they have a purchasing department or a purchasing agent?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you guys think that?
Yeah.
Yeah, my business isn't quite that size, so.
You're the person.
Yeah, I'm the purchasing agent in my office. One thing that I would just, and this jumped out at me, and actually I pointed it out to Commissioner Peel, and I don't want to deny any, you know, I don't want to deny the Sheriff's Department anything that they did, but a projector and a screen that's $12,000, is it bulletproof? That's just, because technology gets cheaper and cheaper and cheaper and cheaper, you know, and, but.
I did have a question about that myself.
You know, and I know that's a little piddly amount of money, but I'm just, by gosh, that ought to be a nice one.
Yeah. Well, I think that the purchase of the property that's being leased for evidence storage, we've done some outfit there, so quite frankly, that almost puts you in a position, if you've done X amount of outfit in dollars, you're better on it at some point, so. And I think it's a long-term, that's going to always be needed.
It is, it will be.
Would, would the purchasing agent or officer, would they work, you know, with Sheriff's Department, DSS, you know, those are kind of?
They'll work with everybody, all the departments.
Every department.
So it would be a county purchasing, would be any department that purchases anything?
Yes.
Would go through that purchasing agent?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
And I'm questioning that projector when my next-door neighbor's probably who they would buy it from.
Okay.
And we're friends, but he's, he sells that kind of stuff to Panasonic.
Rick, since we're on budget, I might go ahead with some of these, because they're kind of budget-related.
Sure.
I just kind of wanted to follow up. I know we had the budget work session, there was a lot of energy at that work session, that would probably be a fair statement, but that's not always a bad thing, because I think we all have jobs to do. And appreciate Dr. Hefner presenting for the schools. I wish everybody else would present, or it's just kind of odd that we only have one entity that rolls up in our budget that cares to come, show up and talk about it. But I know that there was a lot of discussion, and one of the things I think that came up was the school consolidation DPI study, what that indicated, and I would say you could probably go across here, and you would have differing opinions on that, but I am going to offer mine, and I've shared this with these guys, and it's, I do not disrespect anybody that thinks differently, because, you know, I reserve the right to be as wrong as much as anybody, but when you looked at the DPI study, and what is projected potentially is continued declining enrollment, which stinks, guys, I wish it were the case, and maybe economically something will happen, or, or will capture young people with children that will live here. But just my opinion on the, the consolidation, I've served eight years on the school board. I would have voted not to close the school, and I'll tell you why. I think these are the reasons, in my mind, I can rationalize that, although it wasn't my vote, but I think it's fair that I say that. The first thing being, the current fund balance, Rainy Day Fund, is about three and a half million dollars. If it's a million and a half or a million, probably a different discussion, okay? Secondly, the sales tax fund, which is for capital improvements, I believe is a little over $3 million as well. Number three, purely from an analytical data, and that's kind of what, some of what I do in my day job, it's hard to argue that consolidation would make sense, but unlike in my industry in banking, if we decide to look at a branch to close, we run calculations on retention and what that looks like post-closing. Schools, a little more than a business, I think it serves as a source of pride and synergy for the community. I think it's, there's intangibles, it's easy to look at the numbers. Number four, I think we were a little unclear on the budget work session regards to the improvements. I think the, the full monty of improvements were like 2.4 and 2.1 for the two various schools, and it's my understanding that there are going to be some improvements made, but maybe not to that magnitude, in essence, you know, get the basics in good shape. And probably number five, and it's probably the one that probably resonates the most to me, is once you go down that road of closing, there's no turning back. So if you miss it, you're done. You have let the genie out of the bottle, and there's no way to get it back in. So that's my personal view on it, and again, we differ. Who knows? I don't know, maybe the school board members differ, but at the end of the day, that's how I looked at it and rationalized, and again, it wasn't my decision, but obviously as a result of it, we allocate funding to the schools, it affects us. So I wanted to get that out front. Also, I want to talk about, you know, there's different, if we disagree with one another, both the five of us, it's okay. You know, the worst thing we could have is everybody, every single time, being, you want to be in lockstep when you ultimately make a decision, but you need various opinions. Same as the school board, there are going to be times when we align perfectly, and there are going to be times we don't, and it's okay, as long as we can continue to work and arrive at some conclusion or some solution, that seems reasonable and fair. And, you know, I think that had a lot of energy at that meeting. One of my energy points, and I think this has been known for several months, and I think I represent the group, was the early college. Early college is a great thing. I think everybody agrees you can, to, I mean, when you graduate high school, you got a two-year associate degree, that is fantastic. The concern was, and I think this current concern is echoed by the school board and probably the school employees, the grant for funding the operating monies was not approved, there's no capital money. The pace at which it was originally to grow, and I think maybe that's been reined in some, but it was potentially going to be 400 students in four to five years, which is the equivalent of the size of Challenger, which has, I believe, 10 feeder schools in Catalina County, and here we're one school. Then the flip side of that, what does that do to our regular high school, Alexander Central? That's about 1,400, give or take, students. Do they go down to 1,000 in a building that's got, I believe, 1,815 capacity? You know, that's kind of hard to grasp. So, and I think pretty consistent, that's been a concern that's been shared, I think I've shared it personally. But, you know, some of the things we talked about, Mr. French went over, current budget allocation from the county, $6,31,900, which was 29.7% of the real property tax revenue of over slightly $20 million. Three years ago is $5,250,000, which is 32.03% of the real property tax, which is 16,388. Percentage has dropped, okay, because the numerator is higher, I believe that's correct, but the true dollars have increased. I think we had some discussion before, one of the, and I always would refer to the tax increases as the horrible, awful, because nobody up here wanted to do that, and it was terrible making that, you know, pulling the trigger on that. But I think one of the, I guess, residual things of that was, I think the formula that's used to calculate low wealth money that the school system receives, one of the weighted factors in there is the tax rate in comparison to, I believe, surrounding counties. And because of that horrible, awful tax increase, I believe the school system was able to recapture, I think Ms. Mahavy said around $600,000 plus or minus. So, you know, kind of combining that and the 781-9, that's $1,381,900 over a three-year period. What I do not know during this time period was what losses the school system may have incurred due to fall enrollment, federal funding changes, state changes, allocations, or that I think what you call it, and it's cashing in employees was the term that I've heard used, so maybe some restrictions there. So I don't know the backside piece of that. I do know in talking with some of the school board members that the, in the school administration, they're trying to come up with some innovative ideas. I believe one of them was, if you can get homeschool children to enroll in two classes, we can obtain some funding. One residual effect of the early colleges, if those children were going to choose to go to Challenger, we would lose their funding. Well, if they're going here, the funding stays here, which is a good thing. But, you know, I thought it might just be a, you know, a time to kind of say, pause, deep breath, we're going to get through this. But again, I know there was a lot of energy around the budget, and I really do, I sincerely wish, other departments, Rick, if you would encourage them, I wish they would come, although I don't know that it's always a pleasant experience, but it's a vetting process. You know, as commissioners, we represent roughly 37,000 residents, and we represent multiple different facets, you know, EMS, DSS, senior center, the list goes on, and trying to balance that, if you're passionate about something, I would hope you would show up, is kind of my theory. And I certainly challenge other departments down the road to show up, because, you know, again, Dr. Hefner, I think she had a family emergency and still able to make it here, we appreciate that. So, those are just some comments, and I hope I didn't ramble on too far, and I certainly, if anybody else would like to make a comment.
Well, I'll mention the, the departments, we used to have them come and present their budgets, especially when they were asking for an increase. So I, I think we probably ought to do that again, but especially the, the bigger departments. And going back to what Chairman said, you know, you see us vote, and most of the time we're voting together, but believe me, if there's something a little cagey on the, on the agenda, then we're burning up the phone lines. So we're calling each other, we're trying to work things out, and, you know, we do. And, and a budget is, it never ends up being exactly what you think it's going to be when you vote on it. I've went through, I guess this is my ninth budget now, so it never ends up being exactly what you think it's going to be, and you, you always have to compromise a little bit. You know, they're, they're never perfect, they're just not, and they're never going to be perfect.
Gentlemen?
Anybody else?
Since I was largely the cause of the excitement, and I own, I have become, I guess, somewhat infamous, based on my, some of my questions, and I, and I just want to say, I'm, I'm a pretty passionate person. And as I look back at, as I look back at what, you know, what was discussed, the questions that were asked, and after having a really good conversation with one, with one of the school board members this week, I think a lot of, a lot of my, I don't want to say frustration, but a lot of my question came, basically came, or was created by the fact that we just, we have not worked together as a county commission and a board of education, and even including CBCC in that. We, we haven't worked together to look at, here's what's going on now, here are short-range plans, here are long-range plans. And I think, and I think this was, this was said last, last meeting, but we, I feel it's paramount that we do that, that we look at long-term, long-term plans for, for the school, I mean, for the school system, and, and no, we're not the school board, but we, you know, several of us have been there. I told the board member I had a conversation with Friday, I, I do not envy the school board's position, because it's not a, it's not a good place to be. There's no easy answer, there's no clear-cut, this is what we need to do going forward. There are 2 million moving parts that, you know, that you guys are, that the school, school system, as well as the county commission, try to get their, get their hands around or get their heads around, and those moving parts come and go, you know, targets come and go, and like Chairman Campbell said, we don't, you know, we don't always agree here. There have been several, several votes where, you know, all five of us didn't vote for. There've been, there've been very emotional, you know, when I say very emotional, I mean very emotional, votes that we have, decisions that we've made as a board, that, you know, that we were split on. And, you know, there's this, there's this running joke, I don't want to say joke, but there are five of us, and there's this little thing that we say, you only have to be able to count to three, because if you can count to three.
You win.
You win. And, you know, and I think from a political standpoint, yes, we're all the same party. Does that mean we all think the same? Does that mean we all look at this, I don't know, you know, I still don't think we look I still don't think we look at this from, most of what we do, I don't even think we consider the political ramifications, because if we did, we probably wouldn't have made and probably wouldn't continue to make some of the decisions that we do. And I just, I hope nobody, I hope nobody in, in the school system or the public at large feels like the county commission or any single member, or two members, or three members, or whatever of this board are trying to be difficult or not willing to work with, you know, with the school system, because that's not, that's not our intent, and I think I speak for everybody when I say that. But I think we do need to, I do, we do need to set some time, and I don't know that it needs to be, I don't know that it needs to be two of our people, and, you know, I don't think it needs to be the chairman, vice chairman. Because I'll be straight, I didn't know what went on in that meeting. I wasn't, I, I didn't know what was said. I didn't know what was agreed. I didn't know what was, what the feeling was leaving that meeting. Uh, you know, they met. That's what I knew. So I asked questions and I made comments based on what I, what information I had. And, you know, Chairman Campbell and I have had, have had several conversations. I've had, you know, conversations with other guys, and we all realize that there is more to, more to schools, communities, and education than dollars. But we also have to be realistic in, you know, looking to the future, and in any business, if you don't plan, you are planning to fail. And county government and school system, I'm not saying it's business, but you know what, it's very similar. And so that's something we need to do, and it doesn't need to be a year from now, when this comes back up at budget again. And these, you know, we need to sit down and, and it, yeah, it's not our decision as to what you, what the school system does on, you know, day-to-day basis. It's not our decision on what the school system does really, period, other than we are charged to be the local funding element. And while doing so, we are also charged with doing what we feel is the absolute best thing we can do with the tax revenue that Alexander County has that is collected from its citizens. And, and I think we all take that, we all take that, that last comment very seriously, because we are handling other people's money. So.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, you know, being on commission board is a total different aspect. I did serve on the school board with three, well, four of these guys here, and I was on the budget committee for the schools for eight years. And I think anytime you see this group, I'm speaking for myself and the others, the first cut of a budget, if we agree on it and we pass it, there's something going on, because we take it apart, even our own budget ordinances that Mr. French brings up, we'll ask questions, we find out what's going on with it. You know, so we're pretty active on, you know, budgeting, taking care of the citizens' dollars, but we still want to, you know, be able to provide, you know, what's needed. And I think tonight, we've witnessed some, some good things with the business that's coming, and that's what we want to promote, but we want to take care of, you know, our things that need to be funded and taken care of too, but, you know, we're trying to, to look down the road. And, you know, I say, we may not always agree on our budgeting, but we're going to come together at the end, you know, to make everything work. So, it's just that process, and I think that's where we all come from, is being on the business end, you know, you want to make sure, you know, you're getting the best for your dollar, and that's what we're trying to do, you know, as a group for the county.
Okay. All right. Dr. Peel?
Yes, sir. The, I think it's pretty obvious that when you have a lot of money, budgets are easy, and when you have scarce resources, budgeting is very difficult. And our, our budget with the county is, has a lot of, lot of mouths to feed out of that budget, a lot of nonlinear, very conflicting and oftentimes competing needs, that you can't say it's a A, B, C, and a 1, 2, 3 all the time on which one is most important, because quite honestly, how can you put a value on some things? You know, an ambulance or an air truck that keeps firefighters alive, or a child that you got, I mean, there's so many things that are extremely important, and it's tough. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the position of county manager, and certainly the position of superintendent of schools. Fully support Alexander County schools, never have wavered from that in my life. But as a citizen, and certainly as an elected official, I had a couple of questions last week, still have a few questions, just like I have questions about other aspects of, of our budget. And, but I like to think that, you know, a lot of talk here about, okay, the school board and the commissioners need to sit down, work together. We know, I've heard that for a long time. And Chris Beat said one time, I remember my first year here, there was a situation. And Chris said, someone said, well, we need to pray for them. And they said, yeah, we need to, and people went on, and then Chris stood up and he said, no, we need to do it now. You know, there was an urgency with what Chris thought, and I think there's an urgency in what, what we have before us now, too. It's, you know, we can say we need to, or we can say that it's important, or we can sit down and, and talk. And to me, that's, I think that's the first step towards seeing where we're going. I mean, we're sitting over here with a 38 or 39 million dollar budget, school system sitting over here with a 40-some million dollar budget. The fact of the matter is, it's all taxpayer money. None of that money belongs to any of us, but it belongs to all of us, and we're responsible to be a, a good steward with that money and to exercise that fiduciary responsibility of wisely expending that money. So, you know, I think it's about time we stopped talking about it and start doing something about it with setting down people and looking at people in the eyes and having discussion and moving forward. Everybody doesn't always get what they want, but we at least know where everybody's at when we do that.
Well, and, and I'll say, that was the reason for the, you know, for the chairman and the vice chairman to, to hold meetings with the chairman and the vice chairman of the school board, and along with the superintendent and the county managers. But I think, I think we need to have some full board meetings as well and work through some of these issues, because I guess, I guess one of the things that I believe is a sticking point for all of us is that we got to have a realistic plan going forward with some triggers that, hey, when, when this happens, we've got to, we've got to do this. If, if school, you know, if the number of kids in school drops below 4,100 or 4,000, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be some things that we've got to do to plan for. Economic development is, is great, but it's not going to bring huge numbers of children into the school system, at least not right away. And so we've got to, we've got to think realistically in, in the future, at least for the next 10 years.
Yeah, I think we had mentioned maybe trying to develop a formula.
Yes.
And we got a way, we didn't get that done last year, so hopefully, maybe that's something we can do between the two boards, because that takes out kind of ping pong ball a little bit. You kind of know, here's the formula, and again, I don't, I think we got some copies of some other counties, and started down that road, but we never, you know, we never got it done, and that's, you know, that's probably a, maybe a good solution, or at least a component of a good solution, and perhaps maybe meet quarterly, and just like our dates have hard dates, and everybody knows those dates well in advance, and so that the attendance can be strong from both boards. Because I think, again, to echo what you guys say, I mean, we got a lot of friends on that school board, people we've known. Harry Strum's one of my best friends since first grade, and will always be one of my best friends, and have great amount of respect for him, known him forever. And again, it's a tough job. I mean, these people think these things are easy, but they're tough. So, no other comments? Mr. French, we'll go on to forward appointments and reappointments, council on aging.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appoint Douglas Howells, Leanne Wisnant for three years. Reappoint Bonnie Sims, Christine Gates, Margot Mosley, Jerry Perry, and Julie Sebastian for three years.
Okay, gentlemen, you've got the recommendation of the board appointments.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Have a second? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? I remembered that though. Budget ordinance amendments number 39 through 41, Mr. French.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chairman. Three budget amendments tonight. Budget number 39 is to budget for the use of PEG channel funds from the state to pay part of the fiscal year 2017 salary of the IT, in the IT department for the employee who is the county webmaster and PEG social media coordinator. A PEG channel provides public education and government programming. This, that person has been in the budget for many years, but the fiscal year 2017 is the first year to use some of the state PEG channel funding to offset these personnel costs, and that's, there's two other budget amendments, and both of those have to do with Hickory and truing up the cost. We did, went through this, I have gone through this several times with the City of Hickory on the water revenue. Budget number, budget amendment number 40 is to, to adjust the county water and sewer budget based on data from year-to-date revenue reports from the City of Hickory, and again, it's done quarterly. And then number 41 is to, is to adjust the Bethlehem Water Fund budget based on data from year-to-date revenue reports from the City of Hickory, and of course, that's the bigger number, and it's $487,000, but again, it's, it's a truing up of, and we'll go through this several times during the fiscal year.
Just making the accounting correct.
It is.
Truing up. Gentlemen, you've got the budget amendments in front of you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve budget ordinance amendments number 39, number 40, and number 41.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Motion is second. Is there any discussion about the motion?
Mr. French, can I just ask for clarification? The City of Hickory water number 40 and number 41, just like I say, just, just explanation as to what the, the admin fee, you know, what, what is the admin fee? I mean, that's, that's not the cost of water.
No.
Is that?
Our finance director was going to come up and answer your question, but there's a lot of different things that they do for us outside of just provide water with the maintenance and the billing and the green the water meters, but.
What we have to do for proper accounting and reporting on the financial statements, when City of Hickory bills all the customers, they keep part of that, so we can't just record the net amount of cash that we receive as the revenue. So we just call it admin fee. That was a suggestion from the auditors, because the part that they keep is an expense to us. So what we're showing is the full amount of the revenue, we have to offset the part that they keep, and we call it admin fee.
Okay.
So it's their share that they get to keep for operations. It's not strictly administrative. It's the part they get to keep.
So you're not sending them a check. It's money that they're just retaining that they already have.
Right. We could do it either way. We could have them send us the full amount. They collect the customers, they could send us a bill, and we could write them a check, but they just keep it off the top and send us the net amount quarterly.
Out of water.
Yes, yes.
So, yes, okay, so that, so that is, that, that money's.
That's their share, according to the agreement.
That's their share of the water bill payments.
Right, right.
That they, that, okay.
Water's generating that revenue.
Right.
And then that's coming out from the top of.
Yes, yes.
It is not for them just to answer the phones or send out the bills.
I mean, and I know, I mean, I know we have a contract with them to do maintenance on the systems and, you know, read the meters and all that kind of stuff, and, yeah, I just, like I said, I just, I just wasn't sure what it was.
And we, and we could change the name of that line item to City of Hickory operations fee. It's just, it was an accounting thing we had to do many years ago. I mean, I don't know if anybody's ever going to see that, but to help it be more understandable in the future, we could change that. That's no problem.
Well, I don't, when you see money that comes in, and then you see money that goes out, and when, what's going out, and this case is a lot less than, you know, what we're, what's coming in, it makes a whole lot of sense, but when you just see it as $560,000 of, you know.
Well, and it, it's a really big amount. Normally, we do not have an adjustment of that size. In this year, we're operating under two different agreements, where before there was a different funding structure. Now we're at a 50/50 structure. It's been a little bit hard for us to try to budget that originally, and so what we're trying to do is, you know, like I said, based on the year-to-date receipts, we're trying to get that to where, for one thing, another constraint we're under is our budget. So even though they are sending us a check for the net amount, and we're not really writing a check, that still has to show as an expense, and if we don't have enough budget, it will get written up by the auditors that we've overextended the budget, even though I never wrote a check. So, we've got it coming from both sides there. So, that number right now, we might not reach that big of a number for the accounting journal entry that we have to make, but I'm trying to put enough in there so we don't get, see, we won't receive the revenue for the quarter ending June 30th until probably the first week of August. It's too late to do a budget amendment, but the auditors will still be coming in September, so we're trying to leave ourselves room there to have the, the accounting entries, the budget entries and everything work out. But, you know, we will not book anything to that that's not necessary. If it needs to be, that we show that we didn't need to use all of that for the accounting journal entry. That's certainly what we'll do.
Let's build some squish.
And, and so essentially, the larger the, the, the imaginary payment to the city.
I call it a fake payment.
Okay. The larger the fake payment to the City of Hickory, the more revenue has come in from water.
Right, right.
I mean, so it's a proportional.
Right. It's good if those numbers are getting bigger. It means they're collecting more revenue.
And that means we have, there are more customers on the systems.
Our water system continues to grow. We're about 5,000 water customers, and it wasn't that long ago, we were 30-some hundred, so we've been able to grow our system, and that number gets larger, so.
It's a weird accounting thing.
Thank you. But when most people see that, they, they don't have an understanding.
Well, it looks scary.
Water is enterprise and revenue, the more it makes, and the more a fee like that is going to become, but that's a good thing, because it means that more money's being made from it.
Right, but like I said, it, the word admin fee is just something we put in there. Like I said, when we first started doing it, it's not really a fee. It's the cost of the operations and the, the part that they get to keep, according to our agreement.
Are you fine with us just calling it admin fee?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's.
So we had a motion in a second, and that was our discussion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the proposed budget amendments 39, 40, and 41, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Under other business, that's where we put the resolution.
Yes.
There's a resolution that you have before you that Jamie's passed out of support for adequate funding to meet the mental health, intellectual, and developmental disabilities and substance use disorder service needs of the citizens of Alexander County. It's a, this is a resolution provided by Via Health, and basically to ask the North County General Assembly and the North County Department of Health and Human Services to basically retain the same level of funding if possible. Commissioner Ronnie Reese and I attended a, a meeting last week, and this was discussed. A number of the counties are real upset, because it'll impact, have, if, if this, if this doesn't.
A number of the counties are real upset because it'll impact, if, if this, if this doesn't happen, it'll impact a lot of our county citizens. And so we'd recommend, I think Ronnie would recommend also, I'm not speaking for him, but that, that this resolution be supported.
Yeah, I'd like to say, we did attend the VIA Health meeting and so real good thing. I'm not sure how many people are familiar with it. It used to be Smoky Mountain, isn't that right, Mr. French?
Smoky Mountain.
They have just built a, I call it a crisis house in Colwell County that Alexander's able to get the use of that house if someone's, you know, has mental health problems or have been arrested or taken into custody by the sheriff. If we use that house in Colwell County, no longer does someone have to go to the ER or the hospital, stay 24 hours a day with them. They can take them up there, sign them in and it is free, correct?
You're saying a deputy would have to stay and would be on the payroll that entire time?
For them.
Plus off the road enforcing the law here.
Plus all of those issues. And this is something that strictly VIA has came up with. And it was amazing to me, all the numbers they went through the other night of things that could be cut, could be funded not as much and how much effect it would have, especially on us as a smaller county. And they're really big in helping people that are not on insurance and do not have Medicare or Medicaid. So it's a pretty big amount of money and a, a pretty good thing. And I think we should, you know, as commissioners, show our support for the adequate funding to remain.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
I'd make that as a motion, yes, sir.
We have a motion for the support of the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
I was, Mr. Chairman, I was just reading through this and I'm, you know, and I think mental, mental health, intellectual and developmental disability, substance, you know, substance use disorder. Similar to Commissioner Mayberry, I'm in real estate and construction and I'm looking at, you know, looking at this and just talking about purchasing and distribution of more than 2,600 opiate reversal kits, such as that. And most people that go to their job every day, you know, you, they leave their house, they go to wherever they work, they go to their office or they're, they're, you know, spotting the plant and they work and then they, if you're in the construction industry or I don't know how it is in agriculture, but man, is there a drug problem with opiates and meth, amphetamine and all this other stuff. And, um, and I'm not talking one out of every thousand people. It's, it's very difficult to find people that are available to work that don't have these, that don't have at least one or more of the issues that VIA helps deal with.
One in five.
Okay, one in five. I can believe that. I mean, I've talked to some other people in construction and we've had the conversation about their working people that they know have substance abuse problems, but it's because they don't have any other option. Because they can't find anybody else. And I understand it because I see it and deal with it. And so I think this is a very worthwhile.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Has the county managers report?
That was, yeah, I have some things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Also, you have the consent agenda in front of you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, at this time, we will adjourn to go into closed session. North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, four, five and six, economic development, contractual and personnel. We will only reconvene for the purpose of adjourning only. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So move?
Second.
Second. Any discussion about the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.